The CFRN e-Mini Futures Cast is now on Stitcher. Listen to us on your iPhone, Android phones, BlackBerry and WebOS phones. Stitcher is smart radio for your phone. Find it in your app store or at Stitcher.com.
The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
You're listening to CFRN, a community of believers who trade for a living. To learn more about who we are, what we do, and how we do it, call toll-free 1-866-928-3310. And we'll send you a 866-928-3310.
Well, good afternoon. Welcome back. Today is Wednesday, 15th day of January 2014. This is a special edition Town Hall meeting with Mr. James Kattulis. He is an attorney and a co-founder of the Commodity Customer Coalition. We were privileged to have James on the show that when I went back and looked at how long ago it was, July of 2012, creeping up on two years. I know a lot has happened in that amount of time. Michael, does it seem like two years have gone by, or a year and a half even?
No, not at all, not at all. It seems like it's just been six months or so, actually, if you think about it. Seems like it's just last summer.
Right, well, we do have Mr. Kattulis standing by, ready to come on live with us and talk about all that's happened from MF Global to PFG Best, everything in between. What is going to happen? Can it happen again? Got lots of questions, but for those who don't know, Mr. Kattulis is the CEO of Typhoon Capital Management. He's a CTA, a CPO, which operates the Aryan Financials program. He's the president and co-founder of the Commodity Customer Coalition. It's a nonprofit customer advocacy organization formed in response to the MF Global bankruptcy. The CCC has 10,000-plus members and works with regulators, congress, and industry leaders to better protect commodity customers. James has been a vocal advocate for commodity customers, appearing regularly on CNBC, Bloomberg, CNN. You'll see articles and columns in the Wall Street Journal, the New York Times, Reuters. And he's written several advocacy pieces for Zero Hedge, a great website. James is on the board of directors of the NFA, the National Futures Association, where he serves on the executive and appeals committees. Now, our panel today, along with James, we have Mr. Merch Slicker, our broker. We have another CTA, Michael B. with us, coming on the show here in a few moments. Also, will be one of our co-hosts from the daily radio program, Mr. David Williams. But let's just go ahead and give a hearty welcome to our special guest today, Mr. James Kattulis. Welcome to the show.
Thank you. Thanks for that really warm welcome. Good to be here.
Does it seem, well, you've been so busy. Does it seem like a year and a half since you last came on this radio program?
Wow, it's been that long? That's amazing. I applaud.
So, a little bit of a, well, how have you been? Let me just be polite. How have you been? Are you doing okay? Things well?
Yeah, you know, things are well. We're staying real busy. Other than a couple of knee surgeries, pretty healthy, so appreciate it.
You have any hair left?
I got plenty of hair, yeah.
Okay, you look good in this picture. I'm telling you, if that's a current picture, you look good, man.
Thank you.
I think you need the Clark Kent glasses on, James.
You know, I'm actually wearing those today, believe it or not. Those are nice.
Now, James, some of the members of our audience were here the first time around, and others are relatively new. There are two big issues, the MF Global issue and the PFG Best, and they have different backstories. Could you maybe just take a few minutes and give us the history on what happened and how you came to be involved?
Sure. So, there are two cases. They're actually more related than one might think. Both, in my opinion, fraud cases. MF Global was a much bigger firm than PFG, and its demise and fraudulent activities came in a much shorter period. But law and order fans think of it more like MF Global is a second-degree murder case, and PFG was a first degree, and the fraud happened over a 20-year period. But basically, MF Global, we'll start there, since that one came to light first. And Halloween 2011, that firm went bankrupt. At the time, it was the world's largest non-bank commodity broker. It's a firm that had been around since the Civil War. The governor and senator from New Jersey and a CEO of Goldman Sachs, took him only 18 months to completely blow up that firm. And on the way down, he decided to take about a billion dollars in customers' money and transfer it over to JP Morgan to meet margin calls on trades Corzine had made himself, which were incredibly risky trades, made at a between 30 and 40 to 1 leverage on European sovereign debt. And when he did that, he created a situation that had never happened in 200 years of commodity trade in the U.S., and that was that the customers were out money that was stored in supposedly segregated accounts. And when that happened, I mean, the industry kind of froze as like a deer in the headlights. JP Morgan ran into bankruptcy court. They were slapping liens on things. MF Global hired Scaven at ARPS as their legal counsel. They misrepresented to the bankruptcy judge on day one in the case, claiming that there were no customer assets missing. That allowed former FBI Director Louis Freeh to be appointed as a Chapter 11 trustee, supposedly to help reorganize the company. But with a billion dollars missing, that company never had a chance of being reorganized. But Freeh made about $100 million off that case anyway. But anyway, our clients had about $15 million bucks over there. I had filed a
Now, when you say, when you say, "our clients," James, just to clarify, you're talking about Typhoon Capital Management?
Yeah, Typhoon Capital. You know, we're a CTA. The way the operations work is the clients get to pick whatever broker we want, and we centralize order execution and send them to whatever broker. For whatever reason, most of our customers had picked MF Global. And, you know, being a non-practicing attorney, I thought, well, hell, what could I do to help them out? And I went and got a temporary law license in New York, was preparing to file an emergency motion to see if I could get my customers' money back. New York Times wrote a feature on it, had a big picture of me looking scary on their business section. And that next Monday, I started getting literally 1,000 phone calls a day. And so, what happened is just to deal with the incredible volume of calls from farmers and retirees, hedge funds, commodity customers, who felt like they had nowhere else to go. We wound up teaming up with a guy named John Rowe, son of Congressman Phil Rowe. And we worked on just putting together some conference calls to get people to stop calling our offices 24/7. I mean, the volume was so intense, my sister was hearing phones ringing in her sleep. I mean, it was really crazy. But what became is a way, you know, to just keep people informed, wound up turning into a nonprofit called the Commodity Customer Coalition. We raised 200 grand in donations, and with that, I moved to New York on a couple hours' notice, and with no litigation experience, took on JP Morgan, Louis Freeh, and another bunch of other scoundrels in bankruptcy court. And we were able to really put a lot of pressure on the bankruptcy process and help expedite the return of funds. So, six weeks after the bankruptcy, we got people 72% of their money back. Now, we have a court order just about, just past the two-year mark, that'll get customers 100% of their money back. And it's been a while, two years.
Did we lose you, James?
Oh, yeah. I'm here, sorry. Okay.
So, yeah, it's been a while, two years, and then the next thing that came across was the PFG, right?
Yeah, so, I mean, just as we were feeling good about MF Global, we had about 95% of money returned. I was able to kind of chill out on my 100-hour week. I was sleeping on John Rowe's boat, actually, like, passed out in the middle of the day. And I get this email saying, "Due to financial irregularities revealed by the, in a suicide note left from our CEO's attempted suicide, we are now, we as Peregrine Financial, have suspended all trading operations and customers' accounts are frozen." I'm like, what the heck is going on here? And, you know, sure enough, it turns out that there was a fraud in NFA-regulated entity. Some of the NFA had been auditing for 20 years. This guy was forging bank statements with a inkjet, a dot matrix printer, and using customers' money as a slush fund. The guy had apparently thrown out $200 million on things from private jets to opulent, an opulent palace of an office in Cedar Falls, Iowa, you know, giving money away to charity, like other people's money. I mean, really just sick.
Right, right, right. You know, James, I understand the regulators have, you know, a tough job. There's so many things to watch over, but something of this magnitude, that it could go on for 20 years, that there's no system of checks and balances, how is it possible? I'm just flabbergasted that it could happen.
I mean, it's pretty shocking. I mean, NFA was on a paper system of confirmations for years longer than they arguably should have been. I mean, this fraud was actually brought to life when they finally, finally switched to online banking confirmations, and Russ Wassendorf knew the jig was up when they saw the bank accounts.
James, as a result of the MF Global, say, hey, wait a minute, we have to be, we need to tighten things up, let's move to this. So, as a result of the MF Global piece, was that how we eventually caught Wassendorf?
Correct. But prior to that, I mean, there was just a real weakness in audit procedures. I mean, there's a concept called professional skepticism. It's when you go into an audit, you don't want to just, like, check off boxes and be like, oh, here's a statement. You want to actually question things and determine if something is fishy, or confirm things via third-party sources. I mean, you know, the NFA was basically putting its sole reliance on paper statements that were mailed to a, to appeal box. And, like, they didn't call the bank in 20 years.
Now, let me just so that the audience is clear on this, and I'm clear on this. MF Global, that was the case of a man making a bad trade or a bad bet with money that wasn't his, correct?
Well, he initially actually made the money with the firm's own capital, which is proper. You know, and technically, the trade was made within the rules governing proprietary trading. Where it really went bad, though, is when JP Morgan said, okay, well, this trade is too risky, your credit's been downgraded by the rating agencies, we need more collateral if you want to keep this trade on. Rather than exiting the trade, Corzine said, okay, here's a billion dollars, and they took it out of customer accounts.
Now, how do you take a billion dollars out of customer accounts? Do you do a wire transfer?
With a wire transfer, it's less than five minutes.
So, you can move that many zeros with a phone? Do you do it, you make a phone call? Do you call your banker buddy? Do you do it online? Is there some app that you download to your phone? How do you move a billion dollars?
They use a piece of software called JP Morgan Access, which is an electronic treasury platform. And one kind of nuance of this that a lot of people don't realize is that MF Global's regulated by like 17 regulators, but their primary regulator for future trading was the Chicago Mercantile Exchange, which is their DSRO, as they call the business. So, the CME came in to MF Global's offices four days before the bankruptcy happened, and they said, no wire transfers are allowed out of the customer accounts without our express written permission. Corzine sold the money after that point, and CME, in probably about a half hour, could have called JP Morgan and set themselves up in JP Morgan's treasury system and required essentially electronic signature from CME in order for these wires to go through. But CME didn't bother to do that. So, the entire bank, or at least the entire shortfall of customer funds could have been avoided with about a half hour's worth of work from CME.
Okay, now, unlike MF Global, PFG, in this case, it wasn't using funds you weren't supposed to use to put on a trade. This was just theft to provide an opulent lifestyle, correct?
Exactly.
Okay. Now, I want to bring up a third issue, and I know that's not really the topic of the conversation today, but it's one that I just can't get over. I mean, it's like every day I wake up, I say, okay, today's Wednesday, and then my second thought is, how did that happen? Let me tell you what it is. Bernie Madoff, how does a guy not make a single trade, good or bad, for all these years, and nobody? I mean, we talked about this earlier today on the radio show, and with Bert on the line, and Michael, and you, James, how many clearing firms are there? A handful?
In the futures world, or?
Well, let's just go with futures for now.
Futures, I believe, 97 that could custody
Oh, so there's a lot more than I thought, okay.
Yeah, the futures magazines are rated usually at top 50, but there's a lot more smaller ones, and I think actually the list is getting smaller and smaller and smaller.
Yeah, it's a very tough environment for brokers right now with 0% interest rates.
The reason I ask the question, because I thought that, you know, I don't know whether it's at Christmas, or Hanukkah, or whenever, but at some point over the course of a year, it would seem as though all of the folks who head up and run these clearing firms would gather for, you know, a banquet, a conference, a cocktail hour, something, and everybody in the room's got to be wondering, whose clearing made off business? I mean, you follow my line of thinking here? How does, how does nobody know that he's not making any trades? I mean, how can there be a system?
Plenty of people knew. I mean, JP Morgan knew. I mean, JP Morgan just paid, I think, about $2.5 billion fine to take a deferred settlement of criminal prosecution, and they clearly knew. I mean, they have internal records showing that they previously had about a billion dollars with them. They lowered that to 250 million once they realized what he was up to, but they didn't want to pull all the money completely because they were benefiting from his bond scheme.
So, in the case of
One of the biggest problems in this country is you could have someone like JP Morgan, who's paid something like $23 billion in fines in the last year for criminal or fraudulent. We know we're laundering money for terrorists and drug lords to the tune of a trillion dollars for over 20 years, and people still bank with them. I mean, like, I don't know why anyone knowingly continues to do business with people who are known criminals, but they do it. I mean, JP Morgan is still number one in deposits in the U.S. And, I mean, it's ridiculous, and personal credit card, and retaliation for a piece I did on CNBC where I outlined the conflicts of interest they had in the MF Global case, and every word I said was factual. Like, these are evil people, and, you know, if people really want change, they need to start baking with people they trust, smaller regional banks.
And did you read that piece in The Sometimes, James, about the city of Chicago, the Alderman? I think they're, because, I think the Alderman in the 5th district is saying, hey, we want to pull the city's business from JP Morgan because of all of their, they violated a trust clause and what they're supposed to do with the city, so they're pushing to take their business out of JP Morgan here in the city of Chicago.
You know, I didn't see that, but kudos to that. I mean, man, it's Chicago, which isn't exactly known for its
No, come on.
Its clean living. I mean, it may think JP Morgan's corrupt. I mean, come on, guys, like, why is anyone still banking there?
Yeah, it's a big, big thing on the front page of The Sometimes today, so, yeah, it goes back to, you know, I guess what it comes down to is, you know, trust, you know, that's what it's coming down to.
Everybody got real familiar over the last few years with the term "too big to fail." But now, are we, are we dealing with "too big to jail"? What have the listeners asked the question? Why is Corzine walking the street?
I mean, Corzine's walking the street because he donated about $500,000 to Obama in his last presidential campaign. He donates regularly to other Democratic luminaries in the party. And I believe MF Global even had a receivable to Eric Holder's old law firm at the time of the bankruptcy, and had Bill Clinton on the payroll. And look, I'm a nonpartisan guy. I'm not saying that behavior like this is unique to Democrats, but they're the party in power, and Corzine is very, very friendly in there. I mean, if you Google, and you could hear Joe Biden talk about how Corzine's his man on Wall Street, and he's the smartest guy I know, and there's tons of pictures of Obama and Corzine hugging and whatnot, and if anyone else was leaving MF Global, that CEO would have been in cuffs on October 31st, 2011, no questions asked. And, you know, it took almost two years for the CFDC to bring a civil charge against him, and, I mean, the way it's looking like now, the only way he's going to jail is if I bring the charges myself, which might just happen, so stay tuned.
That's, we'll have another radio program for that.
I would like to invite my business partner and co-host, Michael, who is also himself a CTA. Michael, what sort of questions do you have for James?
Well, I mean, you've asked most of the questions that I would ask. I mean, you know, being a CTA, as he is, I know how much oversight there is and how much documentation there is, unfortunately.
I mean, didn't you tell me they had to come and, like, inspect your office?
Yeah. They, well, they want to come and inspect your office. They give you the option of having them come and inspect your office, so you would be ready
Looking for when they inspect. I mean, it's not a white glove test, I mean
No, no, no. They're basically just looking for, you know, backup systems, filing systems, things like that, making sure they have everything in order.
Yeah, they're, they're pretty invasive. I mean, like, we're audited regularly by the NFA. They'll add about a $100 charge on your credit card, I mean, it's, I mean, weeks at a time. I mean, it's a pretty invasive process.
That's a good thing, though. You know, the listeners should think, you know, take from that, that, you know, they take this serious, and I think the fact that we've had the MF Global issues and the PFG issues, that I think more regulations coming down the road and more strict, you know, we're seeing more compliance, I guess, down the road to keep, you know, things like this from happening, would you say, James?
Absolutely. I mean, but the problem is, if you don't enforce the rules you have, and you just keep adding more rules and keep increasing a compliance burden, what you're actually doing is creating barriers to entry in the business. You're reducing competition, and especially things like Dodd-Frank are protecting the "too big to jail" type of banks, like JP Morgan, as it's incredibly onerous to comply with all these new regs. And I think a lot of them are really a facade and don't make anybody safer, okay? If you, if you put in jail the individuals who are committing these crimes, you could do that without damaging the banking system, and you would create a deterrent to prevent criminal conduct, okay? When you, when you let a bank commit criminal conduct and just pay a portion of their illicit gain to the government, the government is a de facto partner in crime, okay? The government is, money's not going back to the victims, it's going to the U.S. Treasury. And in a lot of cases, the amount's smaller than what they made in the first place. So, really, you have no risk, no deterrent, if you're a big bank, from committing a crime, because even if you get caught, okay, so you give up 10% or 20% of your profits, you still have that 80% benefit, and no one's afraid to go to jail. So, you're just seeing more and more criminal activity in the financial system because of that.
I see. You know, I guess, the millionaire, where do, where do we stand with the PFG, with the progress of PFG now? What, where do we stand? What do we, what do clients, what do they look forward to now?
If you take back about 40% of their money, I think it's around 90% on those who were trading on foreign futures exchanges, as the money, the theft occurred mostly from the U.S. segregated funds. Customers who were trading foreign currency have gotten nothing back, and they tend to be general creditors. Really, at this point, you're not going to see a lot of movement unless the CFDC prevails in its lawsuit against U.S. Bank. And, man, that's a pretty damning complaint. I mean, the CFDC is a conservative organization, and their complaint alleges that U.S. Bank knew absolutely what was going on at PFG, that they were allowing customer funds to be pledged as collateral for corporate jets and offices and stuff like that. And I think if the CFDC does win that litigation, customers at PFG could get 100% of their money back. But unfortunately, there's not a lot I and the CCC have been able to do in terms of expediting recoveries since the money was spent. I mean, it's one thing to call out JP Morgan for receiving a billion dollars in stolen funds, because JP Morgan can and did give the vast majority of that money back to the estate, but I can't call up whatever, like, strip clubs Russ Wassendorf was blowing money at, and get them to get money back.
I see. Now, is there a timeframe, do you think, that, you know, if listeners would expect a verdict, or is this something that's just going to drag on for a while?
I mean, if it, if it stays in, like, if the case doesn't settle, it could take five to seven years. I mean, you know, these litigations, if the bank really, really wants to fight it, I mean, they could really, you know, slow it down and drag it out. I mean, if there's a settlement, it could come sooner, but, I mean, U.S. Bank is pretty adamant in their defense, even though I haven't really seen any kind of good defense, you know, come in their way. So, I mean, just based on the facts and the fleeting five-year, I mean, the CFDC case was very strong.
I see. So, if you are a PFG customer, you're in here listening to this, you got some money back, the outlook doesn't look very good, but it may take, we might be looking at five, six, seven years, unless something comes through the pipe, this pipeline, if it's eight. You know, the CFDC has won their, won their case over U.S. Bank, and at that point, there might be an announcement that people would get more funds back.
There was actually, I'm sorry, Bert, go ahead.
No, I was saying, that about sums it up on where we're at, right, James, about?
Yeah. David in the audience had asked a question, which you just mentioned, Bert. Do you know anything about the progress of the U.S. Bank lawsuit?
I mean, there really has not been, been much at all going on, unfortunately.
You were successful in pushing the MF thing, MF Global part. Is there anything that the CCC is doing to move this along, or?
I mean, we help out the trustee wherever we can, but in terms of a federal litigation from one agency to another, like, we don't have to be any to make case, like, I mean, I can't really, like, go on TV and, like, yell at the judge and tell him to move faster. Or I would. I mean, it's, it's just unfortunate, there's not, you know, there's not much.
So, a direct question from the audience, how do we get our investment back? I filled out the form over a year ago, and he's referring to PFG. Beyond that, is there anything he can do?
I mean, beyond that, really, your only option is to sell your claim, like, if you really need the money. There's people out there paying around 54, 55 cents on the dollar for U.S. claims and significantly higher for foreign. So, I mean, the expectation in the bond market is that the CFDC will probably prevail, but there's still a lot of risk in that trade, and you never know how litigation's going to go, and you certainly don't know how long it's going to take.
So, if you're willing to settle for 50 cents on the dollar, there are people out there now that are willing to give you that?
Yeah, and that's 50 cents, or a little over 50 cents, on your initial investment in PFG. So, you know, people have received, like, 37-ish percent and whatnot, so it's not 50% of the remainder, it's 50% of the original.
Oh, so in other words, if I opened an account with 10 grand, I ran it up to 20 grand, we're talking about what I initially funded with, not
No, we're talking about your account value at the time of the bankruptcy. So, if it was 20 grand at the time of the bankruptcy, you've gotten back like 6,500 bucks or whatever, so you have a remaining claim of like 13.5, the bond market would pay you something around another, like, you know, five grand or so on your claim to get you to that amount, just over 50% on your entire claim as of the date of the bankruptcy.
They were doing that with MF Global, too.
Yeah, I mean, MF Global, like, I was able to almost single-handedly move that bond market up from 40 cents to like 95 cents, just by, you know, making presentations to where the money was at, at the, you know, at the estate, and, you know, showing that there was a very strong likelihood of 100 cents on the dollar recovery. It's different in PFG where the assets aren't in the estate. The overall estate is vastly underfunded, and, you know, really, it's, the trade is a bet on the litigation. Like, if you think the CFDC is going to win, it's a pretty good trade.
I see. And someone had mentioned that the Forex money wasn't supposedly touched. Was there any talk on that side of it?
Yeah, so the Forex thing sucks. I mean, under the law, and this is something I'm actually trying to change, with Congressman Graham has a draft bill that we helped advise on. You could read the draft language at commoditycustomercoalition.org/bill, but investments are not segregated, okay? So, they are treated like a general estate creditor. So, if you owed money to, like, your pizza delivery man, or the guy who cuts the grass, assets in the estate, and have Forex customers. So, the Forex customers, you know, look like they're going to be in a situation where even though their money was intact, it's not protected in any way, and if the CFDC does not win its litigation against U.S. Bank, Forex customers could take up to a full 100% loss on the money, even though it was in an account untouched.
Now, I think I'm on the right page, because I know that you're coming in by telephone, James, but we're James, but we're also providing video for many of our listeners who have logged in. And I'm on a page, commoditycustomercoalition.org/bill. This is the protection bill that you're talking about.
Yeah.
I've got up the discussion draft, and then understanding the bill, the map of affected states. What's that about?
Um, they-
Are only certain, or per individual state. Okay.
Exactly. Yeah. So, my partner, John Rowe, put that map together. He and I spent a lot of time in DC, meeting with Congress, and kind of explaining to them just how many people were affected. And congressmen like to vote based on who's affected in their districts. And that's why we were able to kind of give them a visual representation of that.
I have heard, and I don't know if this is correct or not, but PFG Best, and this is internationally, PFG Best had roughly 30,000 clients. Do you know if that number's correct?
Yeah, that's about, that's about right, yeah.
It's about right. Okay. All right. And then I have a question here from a member of the audience. He says, "I was an introducing broker of PFG, and the NFA came frequently and went through everything," which I thought was great for customers, "but here they are watching the little guy like a hawk, and nothing with the real problem." Now, you're actually on the NFA board now, correct? When did, when did you become a member of that board, James?
About, right about a year ago.
Okay. All right. And so, there's a new sheriff in town.
Yeah. Well, and so, so here's the thing, and let me tell you, senior management over there is not a fan of mine, but, um-
Oh, okay.
I'll say that lightly. But, uh, listen, I mean, I think that a board director should be independent, especially at a regulator. And if a regulator's job is to make its members follow the rules, well, you know, senior management and the whole, you know, the senior management should be accountable to the board. And, you know, I, board meetings themselves are confidential, so I can't get into too much detail on what exactly I've done there. But let's put it this way. The two other CTA CPO reps, Doug Brilliant and Ernest Jafarian, who petitioned to get on the board on our reform-based agenda, and who worked very closely with John Rowe and I on the board, they got elected a year before me. First time ever this year, NFA management has run challengers against incumbents. So, the only time they've ever had a contested election by their choosing is when the incumbents were popularly elected by the membership. So, that, that should give you an idea of, of, of the, I guess, the way management views reformers.
We had an article published a couple days ago. It's got my byline. However, I want to give credit where credit is due. Leslie worked very, very hard, very diligently, putting this article together, and covers a lot of ground. Down at the bottom, we have what to look for in a brokerage, because, okay, these things have happened. MFG Global clients have been made whole, if I understand correctly, 100%. Is that right?
They haven't actually received 100% because Mr. Good citizen that he is, John Corzine, had the gall to appeal the order where the bankruptcy judge has directed the trustee to pay customers back. So, right now, they're about 98% because Johnny Boy just keeps on giving.
Okay. We have another host that is joining us just now, and he was with us on the last interview back a year and a half ago. Let me find him so I can open his mic. David, welcome to the show.
Thank you, Dwayne, and thanks for your patience today. We had intended on being here earlier because I wanted to hear Mr. Katuslas, what his latest update this really was. There's quite a period of time has passed since we all last talked, and this guy's a mover and a shaker, the way I read him. And so, probably a lot has happened. And so I probably missed some of that. But, you know, it means something to me, because I'm a person who did lose money in the MF Global. Not a lot, fortunately. Most of that was returned. And maybe we didn't. Maybe we were made whole. I'm not 100%. I'd have to ask to double check. But we weren't involved in PFG. But I thought I was moved, actually, by Mr. Katuslas' vision for this, that, that he had taken this up, you know, single-handedly on his own, putting any business interests aside. It's obviously very obvious that he has a passion for the regulatory side and big changes to take place in the investor side. For some reason, investors are treated as if, if we lose our money to something unscrupulous, it's just too bad. But in a bank, we have $250,000 worth of insurance, and it really shouldn't be that way.
David, right before you came in-
Let me tell you-
Well, I'm sorry. I just wanted to bring David up to speed, that James is now on the NFA board, as of about a year ago. So, I was just saying, there's a new sheriff in town, right as you were coming on. So, just wanted you to know that he is really in a position now to make some changes. And James, I apologize for interrupting there. Please go ahead with your thought.
Yeah. So, I guess let me give, the position to make, board is like a 30-person board that they now want to expand to, like, 36 members to include more big bank swap dealers. So, you know, I lead a minority faction in that board. So, I mean, we've made some change, but we're definitely pushing uphill there. But as for insurance, it's something that I've been working hard on. Again, with John Rowe, who's my partner in the CCC, and John put together a really wonderful plan based on the Canadian model of, what's known as an interim liquidity facility, prior to the PFG bankruptcy. So, after MF, even after MF Global, the industry was pretty much unanimous against insurance, and it's too expensive and all this. And, you know, we need to at least give people an option. And then PFG happened, and then at least NFA and FIA and CME sprung for an actuarial study of the plan, or of insurance plans in general. The study basically said our plan was the only one that's potentially viable, and we're actually working with some insurance companies to see if we can make that a reality. But, you know, I got to tell you, the big banks, the broker dealers, regulators, they don't want insurance. They think, you know, everything's fine. And-
Why do they?
PFG was, was 15 months ago, 16 months ago.
Right. Why do they-
Everything, well, I mean, there's no accountability. You know, one thing, I guess I can't get into too much detail of it because of board confidentiality, but I can say that I cast a dissenting vote over the pay raises that were given to senior management at NFA 13 months after, after the president of NFA offered resignation. Okay? I mean, they had the gall to give themselves, like, substantial pay raises. And-
You voted against giving yourself a pay raise?
I was able to vote against it. I mean, I think we gave a very passionate argument why maybe that, it wasn't such a good idea when, when your constituency is out $200 million of their own money. Probably shouldn't be giving yourself a raise. But, all I can do is keep dissenting.
Well, James, I have a question for you, maybe a little bit on a personal level. And the question is this, is like, what is your vision? Where do you, what would you like to see? How is, what's driving you? And what would you like to see that you would go to bed at night and you'd say, "Ah, I got it done," or "I have a great success in my life"? What, what does that look like to you?
Well, I mean, on a personal level, I mean, I'm, I'm pretty happy the way I sit. I mean, I can honestly look in the mirror and say, "I do absolutely everything I can for my clients and my family," and, you know, to protect people to the best of my ability. I mean, on a system-wide basis, I mean, I'm a young guy. I plan on being in this business a long time. And I want to be able to, to look someone doing the eye and say, "Your money is truly safe. We have the regs in play." And, you know, I think if we have those three things, I think all investors should legitimately, you know, sleep comfortably. Now, we've got regs. We got, we got tons and tons of regs. So, need enforcement of criminal penalties. You know, the 100, 200, 500 bad apples that are inside these banks of hundreds of thousands of employees, like, those guys need to go to jail. If they start serving jail time, this conduct's going to stop. But-
Yeah.
The Department of Justice needs to actually prosecute crimes instead of-
Giving people races.
A partner in them.
Right.
And we need an insurance. I want to get a functional insurance regime in place before criminal bankers start going to jail. But, I mean, I didn't argue for it.
Well, I want to thank you in advance for what you will ultimately probably be a real part of making happen, which is that people like myself, and I do plan on being in this business, like you do in yours, for quite some period of time. And I don't want to have to lose money to an unscrupulous move like what happened in both those MF and PFG. And to thank you in advance for the work that you're doing that will ultimately help every investor. Why should investors be treated like second-class citizens when the ordinary folks that put their money in the bank have this $250,000 insurance? And I realize that somebody has to pay for that. But I think I would be willing to pay for insurance to make sure that I don't lose a large sum of money in a surprise move that could really be a life-changing thing. And it was a life-changing thing, certainly for so many people. I don't know if you can answer this, but did MF pay everyone back? Was that, were investors made whole for the most-
It's close. I mean, US customers have got a 98 cents on the dollar, and there's a court order saying they should get 100. But Johnny Corzine, you know, has appealed that. Until that appeal is defeated, and it almost certainly will be, customers are still deprived of their money.
What would his argument, what would his argument be as to why customers shouldn't be made whole, since they were in segregated accounts, and they should be able to get all their money back that was remaining after their futures trade? What is he arguing?
You know, it's been a couple months since I read it. It was such a specious claim that-
Yeah, I see.
Literally mocked and outright insulted by the various judges who read it. I mean, but, but until the appeals actually denied, he screwed customers yet again.
Now, James, with the PFG clients, I know the goal is to get 100% back, but realistic, you know, what do you think the realistic expectations are for guys that are, that are waiting? You know, as far as-
Well, I mean, it's one of two things. For, for US customers, they're, they're either going to get 100% back, or they're going to get 50%. I mean, it just, it depends on the outcome of the litigation.
And then the progress of the litigation, we don't know until, how does one get progress on it? Do they go, can they go to your website?
You know, we don't have it up on the website. There's a way through what's known as the court's electronic filing system that you could register for email alerts when anybody, like, files anything in the case. I mean, the media has lost interest, and they're not really given updates. And, you know, I honestly haven't been as, as devoted to that as I was at MF Global, just because I have so many at this point, and, you know, the fact that I can't really do anything about PFG, unfortunately.
Okay.
I did bring a homepage-
Could I ask John Corzine? Oh, go ahead.
Oh, no, I just wanted to say, folks, that I'm going to put into the chat box the link to the commodity customer coalition website. And so, I'm going to guess that's probably the very best place to follow this story and to stay on top of it. A couple of comments here from listeners, David, and then, of course, we want to hear your thought. Lamar asks, "Is the 54 to 55 cents per dollar that you mentioned, does that include the Forex accounts?"
No, no. And I honestly haven't even seen anybody buying Forex. I mean, unfortunately, the way the law is structured, as general creditors, I mean, the, you know, Forex hopes are pinned almost exclusively on the US Bank litigation.
Okay. And from Shane, "The hedge funds offering to buy the accounts just recently reduced their offer from 50% down to 45% after the last update." Do you, do you know anything about that? And I'm guessing they're wearing it because it's not looking so good?
Um, I mean, it, that definitely is not across the board. I mean, I know of other hedge funds and brokers who are paying up. I mean, that could be one particular hedge fund that's bought as much paper as they want there, or it could be by a broker who, you know, they've seen demand for the claims go down. But, you know, I think as time goes up, borrowing goes on, barring any significant setback in the litigation, you should see a rise of the value of the claims as the time discount gets winnowed away.
Another member of the audience, "This is a good question. PFG Forex money supposedly was never touched. Why can't it be returned?"
Yeah. And this is unfortunately a nuance under the Commodity Exchange Act, which I'm trying to fix in that draft legislation. But unfortunately, again, it's disclosed in all of PFG's account agreements, but the Forex funds are not in segregated accounts, are not cleared on exchanges, and because of that, they have no protections beyond a general creditor debt.
Now, we, as a training organization, and both our radio program and our internet web presence, we don't deal in Forex pairs. We, when it gets, comes to currencies, we trade in what are called currency futures. Just in general, do you feel that folks trading currency futures are in a safer position than those who have accounts that are trading strictly Forex pairs? Is there a difference? This is just kind of a general question.
Absolutely. Yeah. Yeah, absolutely, in terms of operational risk, because currency futures are exchange-cleared products, and they have the same segregation protections as any other type of futures contract. We, as a firm, do not engage in any clearing of FX, cash FX business. So, when we go out to do currency trades, we'll actually execute our trades in the spot market, which is unsegregated. But then we'll do what's known as an EFP, which is an exchange for physical, where our broker does a transaction that essentially replicates the value of the cash market trade into a futures contract. And then our customer would then clear a futures contract to have the segregation protection. So, it's pretty complex to do operationally, but that gives us kind of the best of both worlds between the liquidity of cash FX and the safety of FX futures. But, but from a pure safety perspective, you know, futures are, are far safer than FX due to the segregation.
I would say to anyone who has questions about Forex, the difference, and Forex pairs versus currency futures, call Bert Schlichter toll-free, 866-928-3310. He is a licensed broker. He can discuss these issues with you and help you decide, you know, what's going to be in your best interest, because every situation is unique. Now, David, you had a thought there, and I cut you off, and I apologize. If you can please remember that thought, would you carry on with the question?
Oh, absolutely. I do, and I want to ask, I do want to ask James. So, James, we have an audience of thousands of people that have listened to you today. Why and under what conditions would any of these people come to you for your help?
Um, well, ideally, they come to us for, you know, trading solutions. We're, you know, we generally do a pretty good job in terms of agricultural trading or whatnot. But much more frequently, I mean, people come to me when they've got a question regarding-
But outside of those major things, what would be another, you know, maybe lesser scale reason why I might come to you? Would I come to you if I had a dispute with my broker, as an example?
Um, I mean, you know, I'm not really, I mean, I am a practicing attorney, but it's not like my day job. I don't really like cases like that.
Okay, okay.
You know, I could refer them out, very special case, maybe, maybe I'll litigate it. But, you know, my, my futures customers demand that I spend the majority of my time, you know, running the business and operating our ag-involved strategies and our new platform that's coming out to replace alpha metrics, allow people to invest in, in large hedge funds.
Involved in the actual performance and market side of the market. And you are?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So, I mean-
Oh, I didn't know that.
We're registered CTA. You know, historically, we've been among the best in terms of risk-adjusted returns in both grain and livestock. And we recently made an acquisition in the, in the ball space of two awesome systematic ball traders. So, you know, basically, I build the investment vehicles and help manage the risk and, you know, deal with, with distribution people and whatnot, so our traders can just focus on, on running their strategies.
I see. Okay. Well, that's interesting. I didn't realize that. I think my first impression was that you were going out and getting these legislative and other angles taken care of. But that's very interesting to me that, so you're really in the, in the business itself of trading and business of putting together strategies and so on.
Yeah. Yeah. We run a commodity pool and about 75 managers. The legislative stuff, the litigation, that's, that's all unpaid, either work or hobby, depending on how you look at it.
I think it's a hobby for you. That's what I'm starting to think.
Oh, man. It's exhausting, let me tell you. I've got a big tail tomorrow at the NFA. So, it never stops.
Don has a question. Could-
And by the way, guys, I could probably take one or two more questions.
Okay.
I have a client here.
We appreciate so much the time you've given us today. A question from Don. Could James comment on PFG precious metals customers? Should they accept the 65% trustee offer that is currently on the table?
You know, I mean, it, it's, it's a decision that the customers have to, you know, make themselves. There's a lot of variables in this case. I, you know, I wouldn't say the 65% is necessarily the best offer you might see, but it's not necessarily the worst either. You know, if you, if you need the money, you know, soon, if you've got immediate cash needs, then I wouldn't feel too bad about taking it. But, you know, if you- But, you know, if you've got the patience to wait, you might be able to do better.
Okay. Going forward...
But again, there's risk in that as well, mostly depending on how the US bank litigation turns out.
Going forward, James, the average trader, what can they do to best protect themselves? I was, I know you're short on time, but Leslie had put together an extensive list, and part of this, what to look for in a brokerage, transparency, compliance with tight controls, proprietary trading, broker dedication, smoke and mirrors, knowledge. I mean, above and beyond that, I know there are traders hoping to get their money back. So my two final questions for you. Is there possibly more money to come for PFG clients? And what do all traders and investors do going forward to better protect themselves?
So question one, yes, there is a chance of more money for PFG customers. It's highly contingent on the US bank litigation, at least for the most part. Two, I think Leslie's is great. Some of those factors are pretty hard to assess for an individual trader. But the one that everybody could look at is whether or not the broker engages in proprietary trading or not. And, you know, just historically, that's where brokers get in trouble, because they've got to...
What are your thoughts on that?
...a lot of leverage.
Would you recommend a firm that does not engage in proprietary trading?
I mean, it's hard for me to, you know, give a blanket recommendation. I mean, I will say, our fund clears at RJ O'Brien, which is family-owned, has about $100 million in family capital in the firm and doesn't do prop trading. But, you know, our Typhon platform is going to clear at Jefferies, among other places. And, you know, for different clients, different investment vehicles, you've got to look at different features of clearing firms. And it's evaluating a counterparty is a very detailed process. And hell, I mean, just on the futures clearing side, we're clearing like seven different FCMs now, too. So, you know, diversification helps, and, you know, looking at that prop trading helps. And also going to the NFA's website and pulling them up on the basic system, you can see the firm's financial information and look at their capitalization. And, you know, if you do some digging there, you could see trends in their net capital and things of that nature, which all helps fill in the picture.
James, do you know of an alternate universe where things aren't so complicated that we could go? That'd be possible?
You know, unfortunately not, but I mean, complicated is the right word. I mean, this business just gets more and more complicated. And I mean, we spend more and more time, you know, with protections and with disclosures and compliance. And all I know is our traders are thrilled that they don't have to worry about any of that stuff.
That's right, that's right.
And our...
That is right.
But, man, is it, is it tough to, you know, do everything right?
Well, it's a pleasure to have you back on this program, James. Really delighted to hear you, that you've taken the further steps and that you're still deeply involved. And also, I'm delighted to hear that you actually are in the business itself, which I didn't know the last time. And my best wishes and all of our wishes to your continued success.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Very much so.
And if anyone's interested, you can check us out at typhoncap.com, T-Y-P-H-O-N-C-A-P dot com.
Hang on, let me get that, uh...
Real pleasure to be here.
Let me get that on the screen. Tell me again, T-Y-P-H...
O-N-B-A-P dot com. So Typhon Cap.
Typhon Capital Management. Right there it goes. Okay. Typhon Capital Management. All right, guys, I am going to...
If people register, like, our website's kind of a work in progress, but, you know, people could email us from there for...
Yeah, mine's been a work in progress for about nine years now, I think.
My life is a work in progress. So I know, I follow that. Anyway, James, wonderful to have you. You go back to your busy days.
David to that.
Yeah. All right, thanks again.
Yes, we'd very much love to have you. And my thanks to my partner, Mr. Michael B., for being a part of the show today. And Mr. Bert Schlichter, thank you so much technologically for helping this come together with the conferencing in. David, I know you were involved in another project and you took time to come in and sit and ask some questions, so we want to thank you.
I think this is a great guest, this type of thing. It's deep in the industry and it is very useful.
Very much so. And to all of you who took time out of your day to come and to listen and to participate and to ask questions, you, the CFRN audience, you are our greatest asset.
Bert Schlichter isn't bad either.
Yeah, he's not bad either. Guys, toll-free, if you have any questions whatsoever in regards to a futures account, what is it, what are commodities, he is the go-to guy. He and his associate, Ms. Leslie Burton, I call Bert and Leslie the dynamic duo of e-mini futures trading. They, when you call that desk, you're not just talking to someone who wears a name tag that says broker. These guys are actually traders. They put on and take off trades every single day for their own accounts, for other accounts. And so you're calling to talk to someone who speaks your language. And you know, if you're upside down in a trade or in a bad situation, or there's a problem, or you need guidance, these are the kind of folks that you want to have on your team. When you call into your broker, brokerage firm, sometimes you might speak to the broker themselves, but many times you'll get routed into a call center. And as you ask questions, you can literally hear the person flipping through the pages of their manual to try to give you whatever the party line is, whatever the corporately certified answer is to the question. These guys, on the other hand, will answer your question based on their own life experience. They know what it is to be in a trade and to be upside down and to be in a drawdown. And they're always going to give you their very best advice. And they're going to watch your back, I'm going to tell you. If you don't want them all up in your business, they'll, they'll back off. But if you're willing to accept their help and their guidance, they're going to watch over your shoulder. And if they see things, because they've seen so many clients come and go over the years, how many years? Well, let's just say that Leslie was the broker for one of the original turtles. And I'm not trying to age her by any stretch of the imagination. If you've seen her picture, she looks like a teenager and sounds like one. She's very happy and upbeat and has this incredibly positive outlook on life. I mean, when you call toll-free, 866-928-3310, you just feel better when you get off the phone, because they have that positive energy going. So maybe you've got a broker, maybe you're perfectly happy. Call, it's toll-free, have a conversation, see what else there might be out there that you aren't even aware of. Also, I'd like to extend the opportunity to each and every one of you to take a free trial in our live trading room every day, Monday through Friday, from 9:30 AM to 11:30 AM. We trade real money in real time in front of real people. And we invite you to come, watch us trade, ask questions. And then we have a training program. If you should have interest in that, just send an email to support@CFRN.net. And to my friend and co-host, Mr. David Williams from pageTrader.com. If you visit his website, you can see exactly what he's all about, what he has to offer. And you can catch him live right here on CFRN every trading day, Monday through Friday, from 12 noon to 2 PM Eastern.
Well said. And Dwayne, thanks for having me on. And we'll see all of you, Bert, Dwayne, Leslie, everyone else, the audience, tomorrow. We'll be balled back and we'll probably have a lot of good information, all of us.
Michael, have a great afternoon.
All right.
Bert, a great afternoon.
Thank you.
And I'll see you guys all tomorrow.
See you soon.
Thanks, guys.
Bye-bye.
Take care.
Remember this, there is no greater return on investment than to see a human life changed and given hope. As always, pray hard and trade safe. Any financial information discussed on this show is simply the opinion of our host, Dwayne Reed, his co-host and guest. To learn more about trading e-mini futures or to take a one-week free trial in our live trading room, call 1-866-928-3310. Information discussed on this radio program should not be construed as a recommendation to buy or sell any securities. Always do your own due diligence and consult with a licensed securities broker or financial planner before making any investment decision. You're listening to CFRN, a community of believers who trade for a living. To learn more about who we are, what we do, and how we do it, call toll-free, 1-866-928-3310. And we'll send you a no-obligation information kit absolutely free.
Hey, you trader, why the sad face? Bad day in the markets? Bad year in the markets? If you're like many other traders I've met recently, you're about to give up, go broke, or both. They say the definition of insanity is when people continue doing the same thing and expect different results. Sound like you? You've invested a lot of time and money in this trading business, right? Well, before you give up or go broke, let's just take off the crazy hat for a moment, okay? Forget the schemes and scams that litter the internet. That 80% win ratio, in his dreams and your nightmares. The 89 consecutive winning trades guy, liar, liar, pants on fire. It really comes down to what actually works. At the end of the day, who can you really trust on your way to Wall Street? Here's a thought. What if you could spend day after day with seasoned traders and market analysts? What if you could cut through the theory and simply see real-time trades and strategies that work? Debunk the myths and learn the ropes? Cut the risks by avoiding simple mistakes? How much do you think that would be worth in the long run? If you could literally shave years off the learning curve and keep tens of thousands of dollars in your account for the actual purpose of trading, would that be of great value to you? Would that be the definition of doing something different? Right now, CFRN has a limited-time offer. FRN Team, I want you to test-drive our online platform and feel the power of our custom indicators for an entire week. I want you to witness real trades with real money in real time. I want you to see a humble, ethical, and proven trading system that's simple, and more importantly, that works. You can pass this off as just another sales pitch. You can risk tens of thousands of dollars in several years of your life in an attempt to prove me wrong. Or you can come hang out with us for just one week. No strings attached, no credit card required. All we require is a simple desire to learn. Stop the insanity today. Test-drive our platform and indicators for one full week. Trade with us live for one full week. No strings attached, no credit card required. If I'm wrong, there'll be plenty of time to give up or go broke next week. So act today. This is a limited-time, sensitive offer. To get started, visit www.cfrn.net. That's www.cfrn.net. CFRN, a community of believers who trade for a living.
Ask of... Hey, trader. What if I told you there was an indicator set that worked well in all markets, from gold to soybeans to e-minis? What if I told you it worked well across all timeframes? Would you believe me? You don't have to. Test-drive our platform and indicators of live data for a full week and see how CFRN can change your trading forever. No strings attached, no credit card required. Get started today at www.cfrn.net. CFRN's commentary, insight, and trade ideas are published by numerous financial sites across the internet, and it flows primarily from the desk and pen of our very own Leslie Burton. E-mini market expert, trainer, and options broker, Leslie has 24 years' experience in the futures markets, monitoring the various indicator packages and systems that both professional and retail clients use. She learned her trade from the old-school pit warriors, who had nothing more than handcrafted charts to formulate trades. She has been broker for many CTAs, such as Michael Cavallo, one of the famous turtle traders of the 80s. You can find Leslie's impressive resume at CFRN.net. While you're there, check out our blog each and every trading day for Leslie's take on what happened today and, more importantly, what to look for tomorrow. If you have a breaking financial story, call Leslie at 1-866-928-3310. Manning the desk from our studio in Chicago is Burton Bert Schlichter. Bert is an e-mini options trading expert, teacher, and mentor. Countless retail and institutional clients have reaped the benefits of his 15 years of experience. He places a strong emphasis on trading the markets from a technical standpoint, and his extensive knowledge of options trading strategies is evident as a CFRN co-host. His impressive resume includes Senior Market Analyst for Daniel's Trading. Bert has also written for Reuters, CBS Market Watch, and has been featured on British television for his S&amp;P commentary. Tune in weekdays at noon Eastern for live reports straight from the broker's desk. Hey, trader, want to get rich quick? Well, good luck with that. If, on the other hand, you actually want to learn how to trade, the place to be is www.cfrn.net. Tune in Monday through Friday, 9:00 AM Eastern for our daily devotional, and then spend the next three hours learning how it's done from professional traders who actually trade for a living. That's www.cfrn.net. Every trading day from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM Eastern. CFRN, a community of believers who trade for a living.
Seek ye first the kingdom of God and His righteousness, and all things will be added to you. At christiantraders.com, that's exactly what you'll find. Men and women dedicated to building God's kingdom. Are you a fund manager in Frankfurt, a novice in Nebraska, or just starting in Singapore? Our staff and members firmly believe that money is only one part of the true meaning of biblical prosperity. At Christian Traders, it's not about building bigger barns, it's about using years of experience in the financial markets, along with our proprietary software and the inspired Word of God, to not just increase the value of your portfolio, but together develop a deeper personal relationship with God. You're invited to become a member of our rapidly growing international family today. Just visit christiantraders.com and click on Forum. Registration is absolutely free, and within minutes, you'll become a part of the most exciting new phenomenon on the internet. christiantraders.com. Prosperity for God's people.